Roll call. Paul.
Here.
Dave Witten.
Here.
Cheryl Hawkins.
Here.
George Bailey.
Here.
Ray Damaris, here. I think we're gonna, what do you think about keeping the agenda as is?
I do.
So, my thinking is that we have the first two cases, which is probably fairly quick.
Yep.
And others that are here for the A case, we'll see how the process works.
True.
All right, we're gonna call case number one, 121-16GR/SPO21-GBA variance owners Michael and Brenda Zanner.
Zanner.
Zanner. Close. So applicants are here. And this is a request for variance from Article Four Dimensional Standards, Table Two. Minimum standards allowing a 10.6 and 6.7% setback where it's required.
May I, could we, could we apply or?
No. Is that your case?
My name is Stone Law Surveying, I'm here representing the standard. Last month, you were here, discussed the project. Try to avoid going into too much of discussion about that.
Yeah, we covered most of it, I think, you know, just covering the changes that were made.
So, basically what we did is... Where's the mouse? Alright, so. This, in the back corner over here, used to be five feet. And we've now moved it back to eight. This point, and it's 9.7 and 6 on the other corner of the edge. To the road, it used to be 3.2. Now it's 31.9. It's the, puts the proposed building at 59.2 feet from the neighbor across the street. And you guys should have received the letter from the Riley's across the street. And, you know, their concerns are of building moving closer to them, both structurally being closer. And part of this design eliminates some of the, out there. Eliminating the, the, basically the turn, the whole turnaround of the driver that it used to be. If you look on the older plan. So they kinda liked what was proposed here, because they're kinda gonna correct a lot of the drainage that's been spottin' out a lot of their silboards. So, and then we also had the letter from the Hawkins, who were fine with a big five feet. And, and time there cannot be built in that area. There is an existing encroachment, which right now is right in that back corner as well. So, did move the building three feet additional.
Presented most of the case last, last month. Any members, any questions?
No.
What's the, yeah, I have a question. What's the width of Blue Hill Road?
The, for the right of way.
The right of way.
Um. I don't remember, but it's just been a while.
Maybe a 25 right of way?
I think, um, the right of way is 16, no, number seven. I think it says 15 feet.
Narrow.
Yeah. Yeah, I was up yesterday, I saw how narrow it was. Fire trucks are gonna drive it out no matter what.
Yeah.
All the way getting it out, so.
Dave? No. Cheryl?
Good.
Okay. Anybody here to speak in favor? Be in opposition?
If you're participating verbally, raise your hand or enter a comment in the chat. Share and all you're in.
Okay, the board will discuss, so I think some reasonable changes were made from last month.
We asked them to do it, and we did it.
Yep.
Of course, I will say that, as I said earlier, that I would like to see more, but I'll accept what changes made, because it was explained to me earlier. Or reminded me, I should say, didn't accept the property, so I understand it in this way.
Right, so anybody make a motion?
Make a motion that we grant the variance?
Okay, Cheryl has made the motion.
I'll say it.
Seconded, all, Paul, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Dave?
Aye.
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 And I vote aye. variance has been granted?
Thank you.
Right.
Thank you.
The second case.
You too.
Present?
This is the one on Pierce Road.
Uh, Ryan, I got it. Does he have a, a little property?
So you should build it.
Great, thank you.
Right, this is a variance request from Article Two, Table Dimensional Standards, 30 feet along Pierce Road. For a second. All right. From the side. Is that your case?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Christian Smith, engineer with Beals Associates, representing the owner of the project. John Chinberg, the parcel is here with this audience tonight. And I did, I'll give you a brief synopsis. So this, this is an interesting piece of property. It has frontage on Route 125, on the longest portion of the lot itself. And again, frontage on Pierce Road. So a literal interpretation of the 75-foot front setback would essentially kick 75 feet off the Pierce Road right of way, 75 feet off Route 125's right of way. You end up with about a three-foot wide for tape.
There should be four lanes in it.
It's, the zoning, it used to be a percent way, but it can't be due to regulations. There's no exemption for town roads over state roads, even though the intent was 75 feet along 125 and Route 4 when it was put in. Planning Board at their meeting last night are bringing forward a change to make it 40 feet for all town roads and 75 on 125 and 4 in the regional commercial devoted on in March. Because of an issue like this, and then there was another issue over.
So why is, why is Pierce Road at 75?
Cause it's in the regional commercial district. Commercial, you go to the chat, it says.
That's the front setback.
Setbacks, no exemption, say, down roads. Even though in the past, it's always been thought of and applied with a 40 feet, that's not what the regulations say.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you, thank you.
Absolutely. So you can see, it basically renders this parcel unbuildable within a reasonable building setback. So that's, that's the request for the variance, and all we're asking the relief for is to apply the fierce setback to the Pierce Road frontage, because that will literally be the back of the lot. We do have a DOT permit for the curb cutoff of 125. And I'm happy to answer the questions or go through.
Can you go through the criteria?
The criteria. Absolutely.
So it's in the record, thank you.
You bet. So specific to number one, special conditions of the subject parcel that result in an unnecessary hardship. Parcel is tied with roads bordering on both front and back of the parcel. The zoning require, the zone requires a 75-foot setback from this frontage, and which is interpreted to apply to both frontage on Pierce Road and the frontage on Route 125. Little, literal enforcement of the front setback for both the front and the back. We see the parcel, as I mentioned earlier, only a three-foot strip of buildable area, which would not be submission, sufficient to permit construction of any commercial or mixed-use building in accordance with zoning ordinance. The unnecessary hardship exists because the frontage requirement's being applied to two sides of the parcel, as opposed to one, given the double frontage on the two roads of the subject lot. The spirit of the ordinance is to provide 75-foot setback from parcels along Route 125 to allow a green belt buffer. The green belt buffer is defined in the ordinance as the following. Green belt buffer required of 50 feet from the edge of the right of way shall be maintained along the frontage of parcels along, on Route 125 and Route 9, in which no development, storage, parking, or paving shall be permitted except as necessary or provided access and signage. The green belt may be left in a natural state if sufficiently vegetated or planted to provide visually appealing green buffer along the higher traffic areas of Route 125 and Route 9 in Barrington, not to require the 75-foot setback on other roads. Since this parcel is unique with the double frontage, the standard is being applied on both sides, allowing the frontage on Pierce Road to have the 30-foot rear setback, while maintaining the 75-foot setback along Route 125 appears to accomplish the fall of the ordinance. Number three, granting the variance will not result in diminution of surrounding property values, as it would allow the parcel to be developed in accordance with the allowed uses within the zone and for the regional commercial zone. Development in this area will help to attract new people to the existing and future businesses in the area. Number four, substantial justice. The variance would do substantial justice, as it would allow development in the parcel in accordance with the allowed uses in the regional air, their commercial area, excuse me. Literal enforcement of the ordinance would require a 75-foot setback from two roads, rendering the parcel unbuildable, which would not do substantial justice due to the intent of the ordinance, the surrounding properties, or other parcels within this zone with double frontage. Substantial justice will be served as the parcel maintains the green belt buffer along Route 125, but is granted relief to allow development on the parcel with a 30-foot setback in what we would see as the rear of the parcel along Pierce Road. Number five, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public's best interest, as it allows the uses in the regional commercial zone are, as allowed uses in regional commercial zone are primarily commercial, mixed-use developments, which create tax revenue with low impact to the town of Barrington. Allowing landowner to utilize their land in accordance with the spirit of the ordinance is in the public's best interests. One of the 2021 goals of the Barrington Select Board is to support Planning Department to encourage and attract economic development and commercial growth within the commercial zones, zoning districts. Granting the variance would further, would further be in line with the goal of the Select Board to encourage and attract economic development in the commercial zoning districts.
So you are keeping the 25, 75 from 125?
Correct.
That's with 30, the rear, on from Pierce.
To apply the rear zoning setback to.
Any members? Questions? What's that? Dave?
Nothing. I did nothing.
Anybody here to speak in favor? Anybody in opposition?
And if you're participating verbally, you can raise your hand or enter a comment. Do I see that? I can see it. If somebody put a hand up, you know.
So, no. Discuss? I think this is a reasonable.
I like the idea of turning around and giving, giving the feast.
Yep.
Can't come up with any plan for three feet.
I can.
Your motion?
Second.
Okay, Dave has made the motion to, uh, at the variance, Cheryl has seconded. Paul, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Paul, George?
Okay.
And Ray, go ahead.
Thank you very much.
Yes. I'm now gonna call case number 20-54-16-GR-21, continued from last month. Russell?
Wait, exactly.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So Attorney Donald, so in agreement, we still have two issues to discuss. We have home occupation with the variance.
Correct.
Yes. Okay. And since it's continued from last month, we're gonna start with home occupation. With our.
Just a brief update, the planning board did approve the site plan additionally for Kalif Highway. Following that, at the September 15th hearing, the board considered whether the applicant's use satisfied the home occupation criteria such that no variance was required. And the board continued it requesting that the applicants obtain a letter from the fire chief as to Section 7.36, and specifically each of the criteria listed in 7.36. Since that time, I submitted a letter on October 13th, but the fire chief, but someone from State Fire's Marshal's Office inspected business. And a copy of the letter from the fire chief is attached, and it states that he found no onsite storage of hazardous materials that rendered the premises objectionable or detrimental to the resident neighborhood. Now, fire chief poorly told us that he could not rule on all of the altruistic criteria. The only one for that was onsite storage of hazardous materials, in particular, inappropriate to be looking at. So what he stated was that it was more appropriate for us to talk to the building inspector, John Hawkins. Rob promptly contacted Rob Hawkins and arranged an exterior inspection regarding the remaining issues, which were exterior appearance, traffic, odor, smoke, dust, or noise that renders the premises objection detrimental to the resident, neighborhood. The building inspector's letter is also attached by October 13th letter to the board, and the building inspector did not conclude or identify supporting facts that exterior appearance, traffic, odor, smoke, dust, or noise rendered premises objectionable or detrimental to the residential character of the neighborhood. Now, before I go, the home occupation criteria individually, I want to touch briefly upon some fire code violations or some potential fire code violations that were identified in the letters. First, this was the first time that those violations or potential violations, some of the fire chief identified to look further, that they were identified. Mr. Russell immediately began correcting violations and is still working with the fire department and building inspector to address those. For example, Mr. Russell already pulled the building permit, as of now, to personally replace the electrical wiring that his hired electrical contractor failed to pull a permit for and did not recode, so that he can correct that. Similarly, the fire chief mentioned that the tent on the exterior might be an issue with egress related to the fire code. Mr. Russell just went ahead and removed that regardless to clear up that potential issue. That being said, the issue before this board is whether the applicant's use satisfies the home occupation criteria such that no variance is required. Those fire code violations or potential fire code violations aren't, are in the process of being remedied, and they're not relevant to whether a variance is required from those enumerated criteria. Therefore, I submit that the board should restrict its determination to the use itself and its compliance with the enumerated criteria in 7.3. So turning to those, the first one is that a home occupation may only be conducted attached single-family dwelling. At prior meeting, there were some questions, and there was some discussion as to whether or not use of an accessory structure solely for accessory storage was considered conducting within the meaning of the home occupation ordinance. My letter, October 13th, detailed while by accessory storage is not conducting the business. The issue in part is that the zoning ordinance does not define what it means to conduct a business, and I think in the home occupation, the only time the phrase conducting a business shows up in the entire works. The Supreme Court has said that when interpreting ordinances, just like statutes and rules, the first starting place is the plain meaning of the words that are used. Conduct is defined by Webster's dictionary to direct, take part in operation or management of, as in conduct a business. And there it said, direct or take part in the operation or management. Damage in turn is defined as to exercise executive, administrative, and supervisory direction of, or to direct or carry on business or affairs. Taken together, conduct, as used in the ordinance, means the home occupation is managed or directed from within the dwelling. Here, the two-way tactical home occupation is conducted entirely within dwelling, because that's where Mr. Russell oversees his business, that's where his employees work, that's where customers come to patronize the business. Mere storage of merchandise and office supplies or cleaning solvents in accessory structures outside the business is not conducting the business. No employees work in that Connex container, no gunsmithing or manufacturing is conducted in stores, and no customers set foot in the container. Second principle the Supreme Court requires when you're interpreting the language of an ordinance is that you don't consider what someone might have said or add language that the rulemaker did not see fit to include. Here, the zoning ordinance use the word conducted. If the zoning ordinance intended that there could be no incidental storage outside dwelling, it could have explicitly said so by using words such as early locate. Use only the dwelling. Do that, and it's not our place to add words that are not in the zoning ordinance. For example, I looked at a few other zoning ordinances, and some of them, Epping Ford does use language that the occupation must be located entirely within, rather than conducted. So a more stringent standard than what is in the Barrington ordinance. And finally, ordinance provisions must be interpreted as a whole. And that means that when the board is looking at 7.31 regarding conducted entirely within a dwelling, they must also consider 7.32, 3, 4, 5, and look at them as a group to interpret them as a whole. Section 7.5 prohibits storage of more than one vehicle on the premises, not these premises, which is broader than the dwelling, and they use the word storage. So it indicates that they didn't expect that there could be no incidental storage outside of the dwelling itself. Additionally, Section 7.36 ensures that appearance is not detrimental. So there is a provision in place to take care of what happens if other uses outside the dwelling that are not conducting the business. How do you finish those? That's where 6 comes. That as a whole, Section 7.3 does not prohibit mere storage and accessory structures outside the dwelling, particularly where there is no impact on exterior appearance. And if you remember, and I think you should still have, there were two photos from different angles submitted on September 13th that showed the business street-side view. And the use of those Connex containers was not readily viewable from the road in those pictures. They are setback far down the driveway, they are behind a shed that Mr. Russell has for personal use, and behind two Connex containers that he has for personal use, all of which are allowed accessory uses. One final note, Mr. Russell made the choice to remove two of the Connex containers that had previously been used for incidental storage for 2A. At this time, there's only one Connex container, the rear one, that you saw that was slightly off-angle all the way to the rear of the lot, where Mr. Russell stores hazardous materials, meaning solvent, paints, the type of chemicals and solvents used in gunsmithing and manufacturing. Those materials are within that Connex, and then within an OSHA and NFPA-approved flammable hazmat metal cabinets. And when the chief inspected the property, he said that it was both proper to use those cabinets, that they were in fact at a higher level of safety than was required for what was being stored in them. And I think the quote was that there was no safer place on the property to have those materials than in those cabinets in that Connex container. Turning to the second home occupation criteria, 7.32, not more than one home occupation may be carried on in dwelling. So it's pretty straightforward, it's the only home occupation, there's nothing else, no other home occupations in the dwelling. Section 7.33, no more than 30% of the dwelling's net living area shall be devoted to such use. Now, Mr. Russell's home occupation is conducted in portions of the basement and garage. Basements and garage are not living area. The tax card that was attached to the first variance application shows the precise square footage of all areas in the residence. First, there's a floor plan, and it notes which floors have which, is what's shown. And then to the right of the tax card, it lists the square footage of each particular of space, whether it's first floor, or whether it's attic finished, whether it's basement unfinished. With regard to the basement, the tax card reflects that it is basement unfinished, BM. Therefore, the use satisfies 7.33, because none of the dwelling's net living area is used for the business. However, even if you look at all of the areas of the residence and consider them living area, the entire basement and garage amounts to only 2,120 square feet, while the residence has a total area of 8,056 square feet. So even if he was using the entire basement and garage, and all those areas were considered living area, it would only be 26.3% of the square footage of that dwelling. Turning to Section 7.34, there shall be no display of goods or wares visible from the street. There are no goods or wares visible from the street. I know a number of the members were able to inspect the property. We've also submitted those two photos again showing the street-side view. There's no merchandise, there's no available. 7.35, not more than one commercial vehicle slated to said home occupation shall be stored on the premise. Two-way tactical has no commercial vehicles. The only vehicles stored on the property are the personal vehicles of Mr. Russell. Finally, 7.36. The building premises containing said home occupation shall not be rendered objectionable or detrimental to the residential character of the neighborhood because of exterior appearance, traffic, emission of odor, smoke, dust, noise, onsite storage of hazardous materials as determined as Barrington Fire Department. The language in that provision is, shall not render the premises objectionable or detrimental to the residential character of the neighborhood. The standard is not whether there is any traffic, or any odor, or any smoke, or dust, or noise. It is whether those things transform the property and make it objectionable or detrimental to the residential character of the neighborhood. The fire chief confirmed that there were no hazardous materials of concern on the premises. And as I've said, those that are there are stored possibly in, in the rear Connex container, in NFPA and OSHA-approved cabinets. Mr. Hawkins said in his letter that he did not identify any loud sounds, dust, smoke, or odor of any kind. Although Mr. Hawkins noted that there were two vehicles parked on the side of the road, and vehicles on the property, he did not identify any parking violations, and he didn't identify any traffic that rendered the property objectionable or detrimental to the residential character of the neighborhood. Now, as I stated at the September 15th hearing, the town zoning district scheme allows commercial and industrial uses, as a matter of right, to be situated off of Poland Road. And it allows many of those uses by home occupation or home business or other permit to be used in the general residential area, which is off of, also off of Poland Road. Therefore, it cannot be said that traffic that would be expected of uses which are allowed as a matter of right on Poland Road would render a property objectionable or detrimental to the residential character of the neighborhood. In some, neither the fire chief nor the building inspector identified any facts with respect to exterior appearance, odor, smoke, dust, noise, or storage of hazardous materials that would render the property objectionable or detrimental to the residential character of the neighborhood. The one that I admitted there was traffic, so I want to talk about that in slightly more detail with the board. With regard to traffic, there is no evidence it has rendered the premises objectionable or detrimental to the residential character of the neighborhood. There are no inspection reports detailing traffic issues. There are no photographs of purported traffic issues. You have the letter from Chief Joy in the original packet as an exhibit stated there have never been any parking violations associated with Poland Road and 99 Poland Road specifically. Parking on the shoulder off the paved portion of a road is legal within the town of Barrington. And if I may approach, I'd like to just give the board something. I have copies for the member and one for the record. So, as that's being passed down, what I handed is a copy of the town of Barrington's parking ordinance. And the page of that, it's two emails from the town planner to the chief of police, chief of police back to the town planner. On page one of what I've handed you, you'll note that it says, no person, section one in that first paragraph, no person except for someone driving an emergency vehicle shall stop standard parker vehicle on the roadway side, but any vehicle stopped or parked at the edge or curve of the street. In other words. In other words, recognizes that you can be parked at the edge or. Off the pavement, but that no one can park to the side of you on that page, creating a hazard. If you turn to page two. I highlighted a second sentence. The parking vehicles is prohibited at all times on class five and class. And I think the order must be unless there's a special permit authorizing the same by the chief of. The language there is park on class five and class six roads. And if you turn to the final email. Town plan writes to the police chief July of twenty twenty. I thought towns ordinance did not allow parking on any town without permission of police chief. The response up above should highlighted is from Chief Joy back to the town plan. It says. We have always interpreted on quotation marks as parking with on pavement with some exceptions. There there snow removal and there was an impact to emergency vehicles getting through and those aren't applicable here. In other words. It is legal and proper for someone to park off the paved portion of a road such as Tolan Road. The next thing I'd like to touch on ends up being referenced in the attorney inspector Morgan letter and the town has. Tried on this a number of times and saying there have been parking issues. The town had only one complaint from town treasurer prior to starting the. And in fact, it followed a special event on October seventeenth, twenty twenty. For which Rob had obtained a parking waiver from the. Notice that it said. Section two, parking is prohibited on the class five or class six roads unless there's a special permit from the chief of. Robert obtained that permit. He'd also paid for a police detail to conduct traffic to ensure that traffic was safe. So the way these emails work, starting bottom, so to see there's an email from Peter Royce using his government email to various town officials. And their government emails and talks about being frustrated at two A, it's a complaint about two A and it talks about Saturday, ten seventeen. And if you move up to the email response from Chief Joy to Peter Royce and others. The highlighted portion, which is I will only offer additional information regarding October seventeen, twenty twenty specifically. Two way tactical has for the last several years held an open house. They have hired a detail officer, full disclosure, I have personally worked those details, though I did not this year. To assist with traffic control as well as general safety on site, which has never been an issue. Further, two A has always requested a variance from the parking ordinance. My predecessor, Chief Williams, historically provided said variance and I did so as well this year for the event. Nothing that has happened on that property has been violative of the parking ordinance. Off the pavement, the one time that they were there was a special yearly event, which they are not holding this year. I think it was a guest came on and we're open. It was a one time event where Rob obtained the required under the parking ordinance permit. That waiver, that variance to have cars parked from a portion of the road. And also paid for a police detail to ensure that the parking that was occurring would not become a hazard to the neighborhood through traffic.
And we are not holding it this year.
So i- in conclusion on this particular piece, the home occupation doesn't render the property objectional or detrimental. For the residential character of the neighborhood for any of the reasons listed in seven point three six. Home occupation meets all of these criterias and I submit that the use currently does not require a variance. That I'm happy to take questions from the board. Have any questions?
Just the conic boxes. How many did you say?
So two were removed. There are three left, two which only have personal items. They have nothing related to the business. And actually, if it's helpful, I can pass this out.
No, I just remembered that there were five there.
Yeah, I have an aerial photo that shows the difference if that's helpful as well.
Yeah, we'd like to pass that out.
So they're dated on the left, nine fifteen and ten nineteen. And these were the four that were lined up behind the shed.
Yeah, on the same weekend, we the two by thirty tent and the two, two of the boxes. I didn't, I wasn't ordered to do that. I just decided to do.
So the, the business items that had been stored there are now inside the. The remaining conics, which is not shown on these, but which is an original aerial, it's set back a little bit further than these four. Is still there. That's where those special cabinets are there and that's where the hazardous materials are stored in those.
Did the site walk that just added gravel on the side of Tolan Road at your property? Did you do that?
The town did that.
Town did that.
Yes, several years ago.
During the walkthrough. Sir, it was noting you and I were there along with Mister Russell.
Yes, sir.
The gentleman sitting over there. And one of the items that was brought up by Mister Russell, he said he had his personal property. And we did not go into the garage, but during your presentation, sir, you noted that that was being used by two A tactical.
Right, that's the, so the.
That's garage. He's using the garage.
The shed.
Oh, you're talking about the garage.
And the driveway is.
Okay, that's what I'm asking for.
Personal objects, the garage that is part of the attached, the attached garage is part of the dwelling. That's.
Yes.
There's some, some use of home occupations.
Yep, and I had that, had that mission. So, so then you, you were not making reference to the detached garage.
Correct, not reference to the attached. So if you see where the car is in that nine fifteen.
Sir, thank you. I understand that.
The yellow on the nine fifteen, that's where that tent had been that the fire chief said might be an issue with egress. That has also been removed, so there's no tent overhanging the entrance to the basement people will be rained on.
With regard to a letter that we received from, I believe it's in the butter. It mentions daily shooting practice of single and automatic firearms. Is that happening there? Are you testing? On the site there?
So there is no shooting practice outside of the dwelling. There's a single room with a OSHA certified set to be able to do test like. Within a contained space. If you want to describe that space and the equipment.
We, okay, so we bought a professional system, a commercial system. That we do shoot in inside. You cannot even large caliber rifles. You cannot even hear outside the resonance. I read that letter. I'm aware of that letter. That is, you could come to my home and I could shoot large caliber weapons. You would not hear it even in my backyard. I believe it's incorrect.
Would you have some other question?
Is there any shooting outside of the facility?
No, the only times if we ever do need to shoot outside the facility, we go to Major Waldron's or we actually have a. A membership for Renaissance Firearms. So, so the answer is no.
Paul, you have a question?
Yeah, I do. How much of the building did you say is being used by the business square foot wise?
So it's, it's some amount less than two thousand. Give me one second. The total amount the. Attached garage in basement is. That's one hundred and twenty square feet. That entire amount is not used. Small car, park garage, there are utilities, furnaces, that kind of stuff in basement. Other personal effects, so. Less than, some amount less than two thousand.
Is being used by the business.
Correct.
And you said there's a total of eight thousand square feet.
Tax card.
Oh, it's a story building.
Yeah, eight thousand's a lot of square feet.
Square, yeah. So this was attached to the nine fifteen application as part of those attachments. I only have the one copy. At first, but I can't pass it through. When you're looking at it, you can see. Per foot it shown in this box down there.
My wife wanted a smaller house.
My wife wanted a bigger.
Anybody have any other questions? Go, Seth Paul.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I don't agree with eight thousand fifty six square feet when you. When you, when you take these numbers apart. Deck entrance, exterior, open porch, finished exterior, so it's total structure area. It's not total living area.
Which is part of why I said my original argument is those spaces are not living area, period. But if you're going to count non-living area, even if you were counting all the non-living area. That space that's used is still only, I think it was twenty six percent.
Effective area is like forty four, forty one, right? That's what the tax allowance is.
Both their taxes. It's predictable, but the, the living space first floor finished and upper floor finished are the only ones taxed at the full one point oh adjustment rate. Right, you can see each of them are taxed some amount, but yes.
Yeah, just to come up with a.
Only the first and second above the business are.
Pass that down, please.
Anybody else have any other questions?
I have a question for John Hawkins. Mister Hawkins. So I read your letter. It's in the packet. You went out and. In your opinion, does it now comply with the? The home occupation permit you issued?
The one I issued was for like one third of the basement space originally.
Yep.
Use outdoors is in my opinion, even though. Attorney says that it's not part of the use. In my opinion, it is part of the use. That is used by the business. So to me, that's use outside the structure. It's just a difference of opinion between what we interpret that outside the structure.
The other comment I have is I just wondered. When, when a shooting range is installed indoors like that, OSHA. Does that negate the three hundred foot from a, an occupied dwelling state rule?
Well, you, it's. It's either verbal or written permission.
From a, from a butters.
From a butters, correct. And I've always advised all my butters and they've never had any issues, so it hasn't come up. It's verbal or written, it's the state law.
To be clear, that area is not like a range where you would expect that there's some amount of.
I understand it's indoors and it's.
Right, it's also a test fire control, so I don't, I don't want to argue, but I don't, I don't think it would fall under the legal definition of a range. But I, I'm not an attorney.
When I went through there for the walkthrough on what you're asking about. My only comment is how much it was and then I realized that my wife wouldn't let me put one in the basement. Five by ten room, there's an alarm on it, they're gonna shoot. And insulation, and there is a lockable door. Comes into a, looks to me to be about forty two inches square. A, well, a square front, it's probably below four feet deep. There's all the devices in it to catch the rounds.
So this is like a shooting box.
Yes, and behind it is a.
Instead of the police having a wall of the little box, I show you an NCIS. It's a big piece.
Exactly. There's also a foundation wall behind it that's twelve, I think it's eleven and a half or twelve feet tall. And this is well below that. We never had a miss, but it's, it's, it's well below the, the ground.
Curiosity first.
Safety is incredibly important.
All right, any other questions from the board? I'm gonna do this for people who want to speak. Where do you want them to speak from?
So at the. If it's just individuals, maybe.
Well, I'm talking about people in the.
No, I know, that's what I'm saying.
So you want everybody to come up and sit?
Yeah, so those. If you jump, shift down.
Yes.
Mister Russell, I think you could stay there. We just do it right on the end.
Okay, thank you.
But.
Would you like another table?
Alright, so we're gonna start opening public comment. So this is just for the home occupation definition. Right? You're all gonna come up here and tell us how, what a nice guy Mister Russell is. We already know that, right? What we want here is anything that is particular about the home occupation statute as is written in the ordinance. When you come up here to speak, you need to state your name. Where you live and what any reference you have to the case.
Yeah, just make one statement to which, which might help. If this were denied, the variance piece has an issue regarding hardship and that's where a lot of. Comments regarding.
Not hearing any.
That's not here, so those comments should come.
Right.
After to extend, but this is.
Any hardship discussion is the next part of this phase. All we're doing right now. Is discussing the home occupation definition as it is in the ordinance, okay? So I will ask for people who are speaking here in favor to come up and speak and please be polite. Yeah, just sit in the chair and speak.
It's on you.
Yeah, you're all set. Thank you.
Okay, I have like three minutes to say what I want. Okay, first thing.
Sir, your name, your name, please.
Your name and.
Dennis James Pereira. I live at fifty four Dominic Drive, Barrington. And my first thing that I would like to say is. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the Constitution, stand one nation, under God. Indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Alright, what I have to say is. Regarding the home business. Mister Russell, Mister Vilnu. Do the business because Mister Russell is a one hundred percent disabled American veteran, as am I. And he also was a police officer in Dover, so he couldn't do his job anymore because of his injuries. So he found a passion that he could do in his home office or home business to be gunsmithing. Okay, I have been there since, I have been a customer since twenty seventeen. I have never seen any unsafe acts. I have. Well, best regard for, for Mister Vilnu and Mister, Mister Russell. They did not envision that the business would take off as well as it did. And therefore, they are trying to move to a different location across from what we. Affectionately call Cozy's, which is now changed, okay? And they need to do this to be able to expand their business. They employ a lot of disabled veterans who could not. In a nine to five in other areas. So here they're, he's, he's employing, gainfully employing. Disabled veterans. He wants to, they want to purchase the land and build the building. That will get this whole thing, the whole point will be moot if they can do that, however, without. Door permission and without. And with a, the lawsuit that's frivolous, in my opinion, I'm sorry, I, just my opinion. A lawsuit that is being conducted, they will not be able to. Get the loan because nobody's going to secure a loan and you're, you know, under a lawsuit, okay? The, the way I look at it is, this is, you know, after all, our sole purpose is to represent the. Verantonians and do what's best for us all. And it's going to be more of a benefit. Loss benefit to the, to the town is he pays taxes, he employs people. When you move, when they move to the new building, they'll be paying more taxes, okay? And the loss is these people. And the loss is these people, again, I know it's just not supposed to be crowded, but they will lose their livelihood. Okay? And a lot of employees will lose their livelihood. So.
Your discussion to the home occupation.
Yes, the home occupation. And I would, uh, I would humbly, uh, request that you take into consideration the entire home occup- home occupation business and what he's doing, what they're doing, uh, to comply with all regulations, to comply with all ordinances and all safety and fire and police and parking and everything. They're doing the best they can and they are actually exceeding what is required or what is expected of them. And again, if they're denied, if their lawsuit goes forward, then they will not be able to secure the loan to be able to build this larger building to contribute more taxes to our town.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is in favor now. We'll do after.
Understood. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Randall Heller, one-one-three Tolan Road, Barrington. Our property adjoins two A Tactical immediately to the port side. Uh, each morning when we get up and part our curtains, we're the first to view a, what was a very large tent, which was an extension of two A Tactical. And did we have any objection to that view or the existence of that ten, tent? Absolutely none whatsoever. We did not object to that. Did the town solicit our opinion regarding that tent? No, it did not. In fact, the town in no way solicited our opinion as an abutter to two A Tactical, other than the invitation to come here tonight and express our opinion, which we appreciate. But we've made it clear to two A Tactical that their customers are welcome to park in front of our house off the road, uh, adjoining our property. We have no issue with that whatsoever. We've made that clear on more than one occasion. The customers are welcome to park in front of our home. We've also said that on special occasions, his employees are welcome to park in our driveway, but just please don't drive on our grass. Um, we have no issues whatsoever with two A Tactical, and we appreciate for what they are doing and who they are and helping our veterans. And, um, I just want to say they have our endorsement.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else speak in favor?
My prepared statements, uh, my name is Frank Natale. I'm actually an abutter to Randy Heller, the previous speaker. So I'm two doors down from Rob. Uh, I prepared some statements that are more akin to, uh, the fall, the next, but, uh, I just wanted to let, let everybody know, uh, regarding the home business. Uh, somebody mentioned earlier about hearing gunshots. I've been there a little over two years. I've never once heard any gunfire, uh, coming from Mr. Russell's property. I just wanted to put that on the record as I live very close to Rob.
Traffic?
Traffic has never been an issue. Um, as, as his lawyer talked about, they, they were on, on the, that, not, they were never parked on the road. So I just wanted to put that.
Sure. Your last name again, please.
Frank Natale.
Thank you.
Anybody else speak in favor?
Good evening. My name is Linda Cole. My husband and I, family live at ninety-eight Tolan Road across the street. I just want to say that we've lived here just a little less than three years. In that time period, we have never heard any noise that bothered us. We have had no problem with parking. The customers, the employees, Rob has been such a wonderful neighbor. I never hear any noise from any gunfire or sounds like that. And I just want to say that as an abutter, I have no problem with this moving forward and hope that he gets what he needs to continue his business.
Anyone else speak in favor?
So is anybody virtually looking to speak in?
Excuse me, Connor.
Oh, I apologize.
My name's Chris Sawyer. Live at eighteen Overlook Circle in Barrington. Um, I'm an enrolled agent. Uh, my wife's a CPA. We own a business. Uh, we work out of our house. We have the home occupancy permit by the town of Barrington. And, uh, um, I'm, I'm listening to, um, these proceedings. I was here last month. Uh, I've known Rob for about a year and a half. I'm a disabled veteran myself. I'm the finance officer for the, uh, American Legion in Barrington. I'm active with a snowmobile club here in Barrington. I'm the secretary. Um, and the, the things that I'm hearing makes me, um, I'm, I'm just kind of disgusted with, um, the way he's being treated. Okay? I'm just really disgusted with, you know, I live in Barrington. I, I love this town. I've lived here for, for four years. Um, we, me and my wife, we had a home office in, um, in, um, Edgewater, Maryland. Same thing. We had a tax business. And, um, I, I worked for the IRS for twenty-four years. I was in the Navy eight years. Um, my last eleven years for the, um, IRS, I was a policy analyst, uh, national headquarters. And, um, as a revenue officer for eight years, I was involved in, uh, um, filing liens, seizures, um, levies, garnishments, um, had experience with a lot of hearings. And I don't understand, um, why this committee, why this town is putting this honorable person through this. Okay? Um, me and my wife have taken the Build and AR workshop. Uh, we've worked with Rob on several different occasions. Uh, my daughter, who's seventeen right now, she, uh, she organized and led this Back to Blue Rally, um, which, uh, was to honor the police. And, uh, Rob came and spoke and, uh, you know, it, it brought the town together. And I feel like, you know, I, I'm involved, uh, with a, a, a political committee and I'm on, involved with the social media. And, and I believe that this, this stuff that's going on is tearing this town apart. Okay? Maybe not the whole town, but part of the town. And, uh, I just really, uh, encourage the, the committee, please let this pass. Let this go. Give provisions. When I was a revenue officer working for the IRS, there was provisions where sometimes it's just not in the best interest to, uh, you know, to drown some guy. Okay? So please, uh, you know, let this go. Let it pass. Thanks.
Anybody here speak in favor? Can't see behind the television.
One, one, one more comment.
Hello to the committee.
Amen.
My name is Edward Brito. I live at one-one-six, uh, A Pond Hill Road. I am a disabled veteran. I went in the United States Army from Barrington in nineteen eighty. And I recently moved back two years ago. I came back here with a lot of thought processes, uh, maybe getting my own business going, helping my family. Uh, after being here two years, I still respect my town. Went in the army and I moved back here. Some of the things that I saw out on the West Coast, uh, I'm kind of asking myself, why has that followed me here to a town that has always pushed to get people in it, pushed to get taxes to take care of the town, pushed to get taxes to get the education system in this town up to par? I'm one of those individuals that came from this town when it didn't have a good tax base. I remember sitting in that building over there with forty or fifty other kids in an open room trying to get an education. I noticed the taxes have come in and they've built some nice schools since I've been gone. Rob has done everything that he has possibly in his ability to do to comply with the ordinances and the taskings, the writings, and rulings that the committee and the town has put out to him. The two years that I've been here, every time that I've gone down there, and I only live four and a half miles up the road, there are always customers to drive out of there in a kind neighborhood manner. Noise, anything else that affects his neighbors is squashed. People that drive up from Massachusetts, drive up from New York, they come up from Florida to do business with him. A lot of money that this town needs because it's on one-twenty-five and it's rolling in there. We don't have a state liquor store yet. Okay? That helps us out a lot. See how that runs. Okay? He is trying and doing his best. His employees are in there doing their best. They are trying to run a business and they are trying to do it in this town. Not everybody in the town likes the fact that it's a gun business. But not everybody in the town likes the fact that everywhere you go, there's junk cars out in someone's front yard. By town ordinance, that doesn't look good in the neighborhood. I left a state where you can live in a main dollar mansion, and right next to it, it looks like the Beverly Hillbillies. And they still allow it. This gentleman is doing the best he can to run his business in this town. He is doing the best he can to comply with the ordinances and the instructions that have been sent down to him through the town and the committee. He has a lot of backing in the town. I only being here two years back to this town where I said I went, I'm just looking at what's going on. I have to make decisions after being here two years and seeing the way the town runs, if in fact I have, I want to live in the town. I should be able to come back here after my time in the service and tell myself, I feel good about coming back here. I want to live here. I want to start a business here. I want to become part of the community. That's what he has done. That's what he has gone out of his way to do. And he goes out of his way to comply.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Anybody here to speak in favor? Anyone online?
So you're participating largely and you want to speak in the home occupation portion? You may use your hand or enter a comment in chat feature? Had a while doing it. Hasn't been.
All right. Uh, then we'll go next to people who want to speak in opposition. Anyone?
So again, if you'd like to speak in opposition to home occupation portion, you'd be ready to add to your.
All right. So we're gonna close the public portion of the hearing and the board will discuss. So we got it.
Oh, thank you. Uh, so this shows here Gary Embry. Uh, Mr. Embry, you'll have to.
Unmute. Yeah. Get unmute yourself. There you go.
Hey, can you hear me okay?
Yep. Yeah, you're speaking in opposition to the home occupant.
I am.
Home occupation, not the variance, just the home occupation.
Yeah, I understand that. I am speaking in opposition. Uh, you know, I support Rob's business. Uh, in two thousand and seventeen, he came to everyone in the Mills Falls Homeowners Association and asked that he have a business in his, uh, basement that would be he and just maybe one other part-time employee. And we all said yes, because we all love Rob and we think he's a great guy. Uh, the business has exceeded beyond his wildest imagination. And it is, um, we all wish him the very best and we hope that he can move to his new site as soon as possible. However, the CCNRs of our homeowners association clearly state that, uh, this business as, uh, can only exist with one professional office and one person. That's our CCNRs. Uh, it's very clear. And that's why Rob came to us to ask if he could do a little bit more than that. And we just kind of gently said yes. And, uh, we all love Rob and we want him to succeed and we go forward. But the fact of matter is, uh, that his business violates our CCNRs. I'm listening to the attorney, that Rob's attorney, talk about, uh, the fact that his business, uh, concurs or is in acceptance of the, uh, of the rules and regulations, uh, for a single occupancy permit. And everything I read is that it absolutely does not. He has multiple employees. Uh, he has a large basis occupied. And, uh, he has, uh, when his, we, we, anyway, it, it is not in conforming the neighborhood. You have as documents in front of you, uh, letters from most of the people on Mills Falls Road, abutters or near a butters. And they all completely object to this business being there. They want him to move to his new site. And so we want him to move to his, nobody wants to destroy his business. Uh, but, and we wish him the very best. But to grant a permanent variance is in complete objection and, uh, to our CCNRs.
We're not, sir, we're not.
So if this committee.
You're not hearing the variance request. This is just on the definition of home occupation. We're gonna open it up to various information later. I think you're referencing the variance request, which is not what we're hearing right now.
Well, I'm just saying that if you accept his variance request, it, uh.
We haven't even discussed that.
Violates.
Hasn't been presented yet.
We'll leave.
It's been presented yet.
Well.
You can comment on that.
I'm just telling you, that is a fact.
Thank you. I think add versus home occupation as it's defined in the variance joining ordinance. Seven point three.
I.
Thank you.
I have Jeff.
There was one person that joined. I'd have to press star six if you're covering five-two-one. Speaking in opposition of occupation portions of this case. Got the chair and I even speak.
He's not seen it in this.
That background.
Nothing.
Last chance.
All right. We're gonna close the public portion of the case and the board will discuss. Excuse me. I think we should go through every aspect or every definition in the ordinance and basically discuss and come to an agreement, possibly even vote on each section as it goes through, just, just so we have it clear on the record where we are. Okay? So home occupation, I'm gonna read it. In zoning districts that permit the establishment of home occupations, all such uses must comply with the following provisions, which are listed seven point three, uh, one to seven. If the zoning administrator determines that the proposed use is in compliance with all the following provisions, authorization for the home occupation may be granted by the building inspector without review by the planning board. That has occurred, I believe, twice already. Right? All right. The proposed use must also comply with all applicable, uh, local, state, and federal regulations. A big wide open. All right. First one, seven point three one. A home occupation may only be conducted within a detached, single-family dwelling. Based what I saw when I was out there, that is indeed the case. It's all inside the home. Uh, there was issues whether or not the tent was, could, you know, again, could be complied, but that, that is now gone. The garage is actually part of the house. He's actually, he can get in from the basement into the garage. It's actually.
Talking about seven-three-one.
Seven point three-one, yes. Yeah. So, but it's all within the house.
Garage is attached to the house.
So. So it sounds like he meets. Yeah. Sounds like he meets seven point. Yes. All right. All agree, Paul? Dave?
Yep.
Carol? Go.
Not the net living space. Net living space is your first floor, your second floor, your.
Talking about.
And I'm talking about the home occupation may only be conducted within a detached, single-family dwelling. That's all, that's the only thing we're considering here.
It's not a dwelling. It's a garage. It's not part of the dwelling. It's not where they live. It's where they store their cars.
It's in the building.
It's in the building.
Okay. So you disagree. All right. George?
Yes, I agree.
All right. So we have four. So Paul, Dave, George, and I all agree that it is in a single-family dwelling. Cheryl, you disagree. Yep? All right. Seven point three-two. Not more than one home occupation may be carried on in the dwelling. Paul? I mean, I think that's pretty clear.
Well, it's all under the same umbrella, really.
Yeah. Dave?
Yeah.
Yeah. Cheryl?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So unanimous on seven point three-two. Seven point three-three. No more than thirty percent of the dwelling's net living area shall be devoted to such use. Is where you're concerned, Cheryl. Is where you're concerned, Cheryl. I mean, it's a four-story house.
Does anybody have those figures handy?
You got them.
I added up, I added up from the tax cut. I figure out the house of about 4,600 square feet of net. Counting garage for basement.
Okay, so now do we?
So, I mean, if you're going to do that argument, then the whole basement is not living space. So, I mean, it kind of.
Living space.
Or it is living space, right? I mean, so you're going to put it in one category. And the whole thing is in the basement and garage, which are not living space.
They are though.
Right? But they are, yeah.
Kind of is.
So then if you're going to take that argument, then it's zero of the living space is being used. It says no more than 30% of the dwelling's net living area shall be devoted to such use.
So that if you're not including the basement as net living area, then the basement.
And you're at zero.
And the basement is where the business is.
If you're going to include the basement, then.
Be allowed there then, because that's my point. Would it even be allowed at that time?
Yes, yes. So he's using the basement. I mean, you got to look at the actual wording. I agree that some of the wording is really poor. This is a poorly written ordinance.
The attorney went, I mean, he played semantics big time. So it's like, we're going to do the same thing and I'm going to pick it apart. You know, it's.
You can argue it either way.
Yeah.
But if you turn around and say it has to be upstairs, can you imagine having a shell casing in your eggs in the morning?
All right. So, Paul, how do you, how do you feel on the 30%? He's in compliance?
I don't like the way the rule was written, so it's hard to argue it one way or another.
Yeah. Dave?
I agree with what Paul just said.
I disagree. I go with what's reasonable. I mean, in law, law does tend to go with what's reasonable. And I think of it as unreasonable.
Dave, George?
Well, we noticed today, yesterday, when we got out of walkroom, that there was items on the wall, there was cabinets on the wall, there was plywood on the wall. There was some other material, something I'm familiar with. On, I said, you know, are you saying that, is that part of the finished material? Well, I'd have to say yes. So I, I think that he is in compliance with 30%.
Okay, thank you. And I do as well.
Question to that, if you don't mind. So, so the basement's insulated, I suppose. Wired. So we're calling it finished. Tax card is not finished.
It's not finished, but it is finished. So it's net living area. Yeah.
Is it permitted to finish it or?
That's where I was headed next, but I don't really want to go there.
That's, well, that's not in our scope tonight. Okay. So we have, so all but Cheryl agree, yes, all but Cheryl agree that it's less than 30% of the net living area.
So it's a 4-1 vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So 7.34, there shall be no display of goods or wares visible from the street. There is not. Correct. That's all. Okay. Agree? All agree?
Five oh.
All right. Not more than one commercial vehicle relative, related to said home occupation shall be stored on the premises. Correct. All in agreement? Yes, Dave, George?
I am in agreement, sir.
Okay. 7.36. The building or premises containing said home occupation shall not be rendered objectionable or detrimental to the residential character of the neighborhood because of exterior appearances, traffic, emission of odor, smoke, dust, noise, onsite storage of hazardous materials as driven by a variant department. So, our department has already provided a letter. All right with that, so we're talking about exterior appearance. There's, there's minimal, well, there's a sign on the road, but that's about it. Let's get back to traffic. Emission of odor, there is none. Smoke, there is none. Dust, there is none. Noise, there is none. And so, so basically at traffic.
My comment is that he also took that, I would call it a tent, that wouldn't live in it, but that's gone. And I also want to say that if you, a sidewalk showed that he had numerous pieces of equipment that would take care of smoke, odor, and also he had storage inside for some of the chemicals that were there. It was, I would, my vote is yes on this.
So the only thing is traffic. We've had abutters that have come up here and said that they're fine with it. The town has actually improved the road and parking for them. So I have a problem considering traffic as an issue. So. So is everybody in agreement that he complies with 7.36? Paul? Dave? Cheryl? George?
George, yes.
I, yes. A certificate of occupancy for the proposed use shall be issued by the building inspector once verification with all the preceding standards is confirmed. So it's my opinion that this is a very poorly written zoning ordinance.
I agree.
Mr. Russell, you clearly are probably a business, but you aren't working under a home occupation. And from what I'm reading, you actually meet all the requirements. So.
Are we voting on seven, sir?
Just as certain, I don't think it's a vote. It's a certificate of occupancy for the proposed use shall be issued by the building inspector once verification with all preceding standards.
Just a statement of fact.
If we, if we agree that he meets all the requirements, I think that's.
That's what I'm asking. I'm asking to have a vote on seven.
Okay. So if we, if we agree that the, he meets the one through six, seven is also.
I say yes.
All right. I think we need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that Mr. Russell and
2A Tactical.
2A Tactical meet the definitions under 7.31 to 7.37. Make a motion, we accept it under those conditions.
That he meets the definition of.
He meets, okay, yes, accepted or meets the definition of it, yes.
Yes. Okay. So George has made the motion. Second?
I'll second it.
Dave is second. Paul, how do you vote? Dave?
Aye.
Carol?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Russell, the audience agreed that you wrote home occupation current. Meet all the definition of home occupation. I think you're the beneficiary of a poorly written zoning ordinance and I can guarantee you there's going to be something on the ballot.
It's going to get changed, I'm sure, but I would get you building. No.
I think, I think you can rescind the, the best. Rescind the variance request. By the safe. Now, we're going to get his minutes.
All we have is minutes.
Got his minutes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
Paul? Minutes? Dave, George?
Excuse me. Excuse me, I'm at home. I'm sorry. I thought we were voting about the variance after this home occupation for the 2A Tactical. Is that not happening? Public opinion about that?
I just wanted to say thank you.
Still want to see a neck.
Hunter, Hunter, we got something.
Excuse me. Excuse me, I'm at home. I am an abutter of 2A Tactical.
Excuse me, please, a little quiet, please.
We just got a couple more minutes for us.
Excuse me.
All right. So George has made a motion to accept the minutes. Connor's taking care of it.
Well, I can't take care of it while you're.
Oh.
Do I need to take care of it?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
Excuse me.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. I'm sorry. Are we still voting on the variance for 2A Tactical?
There is no variance being heard tonight.
That was pretty shysty how you did that, that there was no public comment about the home occupation, that you said there was going to be public comment about the very, the variance that you were saying. So I'm an abutter to 2A Tactical. And I can tell you right now, I support Rob's business, but I have two little kids who are out there that have people coming in and out of that business every day. And you can't even hear me speak because you said they were going to speak about a variance.
Thank you. If you want to write her and tell her that we did ask for comment and she didn't, raise your hand. And the meeting is over. We haven't adjourned the meeting. No, but we've completed that case.
My neighbor.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Wait, so George has the minutes?
You got to do the minutes first.
Yeah, George is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Before you guys leave, guys on the board.